Welcome, everybody, to the Monday, April 13th, meeting for the Moscow Administrative Committee. To my right is John Weber, to my left is Jim Boland, and to his left is Gary Redner, City Supervisor, and I'm Dan Carskowen. First up on the agenda is the approval of the March 23rd, 2015 minutes. Looks like, well, we were all here, weren't we?
Yes, we were.
You guys good with them?
I would move to approve.
All right, we'll consider them approved, then. Next up is a perch request for a letter from council allowing beer and wine license within 300 feet of a school or church per Idaho Code, and Rod Hall's presenting.
Thank you. Good afternoon. A couple of admin committee meetings ago, had a question that was directed to me to do a little research concerning the issue of granting the waiver to the perch. The issue was whether the city could set conditions for the granting of the waiver to the applicant for being within 300 feet of the church, as Idaho Code grants that discretion to the city on the issue of allowing the selling of alcohol within that 300 feet of the school or the church. Then can the city put conditions on the granting of the waivers, the issue? And then I think there was also a question of whether the city could put a sunset clause on the waiver. That'd be a condition, saying that this waiver would expire at a certain time. And specifically, I think, there was also a question, could the city enter into an agreement with the applicant and require the applicant to do or not do something, such as discontinue the packaged beer sales, beer and wine sales? Which led to the question, if we're allowed to do that, if the applicant breached that agreement, could the city revoke the permit? So on that issue, I will get to that in just one second. Then there was another question that was brought up, that says, does the applicant have a duty to make sure that they are adhering to the law in their application? Looking at trying to set a condition on the applicant, there was a case out of 1951, Nampa Lodge versus Smiley, who was the governor at the time. It states, "On the rights of a licensee," it says, "One who procures a state, county, and city alcohol license takes it subject to the provisions of the statute under which the license is granted." So basically, you have to look at the statute to see what you can actually do. There was a 1980 case dealing with a beer license, application for onsite consumption, that was Mickelson versus the city of Rexburg. There was a 1968 ordinance that impliedly repealed a prior 1940 ordinance that dealt with licensing taverns within the city, basically saying that taverns shouldn't be within someplace near residential areas. That case dealt with a technical issue concerning the savings clause in the newer ordinance. Basically, the older language, the older ordinance, was vague and imprecise, and the court found that the newer ordinance was more specific and impliedly repealed that older ordinance. But the facts of that case was that the plaintiff's property was zone commercial, and in the 1968 ordinance, they changed the ordinance within their community, and so that property fell within the commercial zone. And taverns under the city's ordinance at that time were permitted to use, were permitted in that area. The court found that concerning the city's discretion, the plaintiff had all the qualifications to have a beer license and none of the disqualifications. Said that the city did not have discretion to deny the license, that the city's duty to issue the license was merely ministral. So it comes to the question, if the city were to put conditions on the granting of the waiver, could the city revoke the permit if a violation of the conditions occurred? And under Idaho Code 23-1042, talks about for procedure for other licensing authorities, it clearly states that the city can revoke an alcohol license on the same grounds as the director of the Idaho State Police. Those grounds are listed in the statute, and they are usually dealing with the list of violations, of any violations of that chapter. And basically, if you commit a certain crimes, if you're underage, you know, selling to underage people, or you commit a felony. So the answer to the first one's that the city would not be able to enforce any conditions that the city put on a license, other than those what the director of the Idaho State Police could revoke the license for. Basically, once you grant the waiver, saying the applicant now meets all of the qualifications, and the city removed the disqualifications and waived the requirement, or waived that being within 300 feet, the applicant's license could only be revoked on the same conditions as the director of Idaho State Police. And so if the city and applicant entered into an agreement, you know, say no packaged beer sales, and then the applicant went back on that agreement, the city would not be able to enforce that agreement. Then there was another issue about the duty of the applicant. Under Title 23, Chapter 10, there's a couple sessions that deal with it. It says, "No retailer shall sell alcohol within the state until they're licensed by the city. And the applications for license shall be made under oath to the director of the Idaho State Police, then through the county, then to the city, and state that the applicant possesses all the qualifications and none of the disqualifications." So if the applicant meets all of the conditions set in state law, the city has to issue the retailer license, subject to the restrictions and upon conditions in this act specified. So the applicant has a duty, and even states under oath, that he is conforming to the law. So I'd say that he has an affirmative duty to research the law, because it's not an excuse under the law to say, "I didn't know, I wasn't being truthful on my sworn application." May protect him from getting into trouble criminally for that, but I think they have a duty to look into the law. I hope that answers your questions.
I've got a question, too. At this point, we're talking about the LDS church, which is within the 300-foot limit. How about the other Campus Christian Center? That's well within.
Yes.
And so if we were to give the LDS, say that, since that's, if I remember, that's 292 and a half feet, and so we're going to say that that's okay, does that mean we are automatically saying that the Campus Christian Center is okay?
I believe, once you grant the waiver, you're granting, saying that it's okay, no matter how far away they are, how close they are within that 300 feet.
Okay, and since we have not heard anything from the Campus Christian Center, they apparently are not too concerned about this.
Yeah, I don't believe you've heard from them.
And another question, if I might.
Go ahead.
How long, did this come up with a change in ownership, or why did this thing all of a sudden come up?
I think they realized, they were trying to operate as a bar, and found out that it couldn't operate within our zone in the neighborhood business, you couldn't operate as a bar. Changing owners, the prior owners, I understood it, was trying to establish a restaurant, and was, came in and did, for building permit for remodel in there, to operate as a restaurant, what they still can operate as. Then the process has found out that they had to be, get a waiver from the city council to operate or sell alcohol for onsite consumption, if they're within 300 feet of a church or a school.
Remember, the precursor to authorization to have, be able to sell alcohol in any form is regulated by the state, and the county and the city both have subsequent licenses that need it, and you have to have all three. So the state, in reviewing it for the restaurant, or whatever the purpose was, noted that, that was not within, the city had not issued a 300-foot waiver letter. So, and it is a prohibition. The statute says that if it's located within 300 feet, that you shall not be able to sell liquor or alcohol by the drink unless the city in its discretion issues that waiver.
Has that waiver ever been given?
Yes. It's been given in a few places that have been well-established in the past. Typically, down, if you remember the old, where Peony Athletic was, at Third and Jackson in that area, there was a church right next, within 300 feet of a bar that was there, or a restaurant that was serving alcohol. And it was one of those things that, it's a recognition of small towns, if you will, where you might have a main street that isn't very long, and there may be a house of worship or a school within a certain amount of feet. Strip malls, you'll see, oftentimes in bigger cities, you'll see a restaurant that serves alcohol, and there may be a church next to it, or a school, or day school, or something like that.
Has that one ever been given to the perch?
Not to my knowledge.
I've never, I didn't see that when I did my research.
Okay, so there's no, we, then when they were doing it, when they were selling beer by the glass, they were out of compliance?
If they were in violation of the law.
Now, how that occurred, whether the state didn't pick it up, the city didn't pick it up, however it happened, it doesn't change the fact that the law's still the law, and even though they were allowed to do it, they were doing so in violation of the statute. Which is one of the reasons that the state's saying, okay, if you want to do it, if you want to continue that, then you need to get your waiver at this point.
Okay.
And until that waiver comes through, it's my understanding, the state will not issue the license for...
An on-premise license?
Yes.
Right.
Consumption on premises, exactly. Packaged, packaged beer and wine sales would still be allowed in that zone and under state regulations.
Okay.
Correct, Rod?
Correct.
To clarify this, you still cannot have a bar in that zone, correct?
Correct.
Regardless of whether we give a waiver or not, you can't have a waiver for a bar, it'd only be for a restaurant that would sell alcohol as an amenity to go along with the restaurant, and you could not have a bar. Is that correct?
Correct. Under Moscow City Code, in the neighborhood business zone, bars are prohibited.
And we have a percentage of sales that have to be by food, and a percentage of sales that can be by...
That defines a restaurant.
Yeah, there's a formula, it's gotta be 40 percent, I believe it's 40 percent food, 60 percent, up to 60 percent.
Bill Belknap's here, if you'd like to have him recite what the zoning code says, the state's regulation on what constitutes a restaurant selling alcohol by the drink as the state alcohol code.
Yeah, I'd like that.
The city zoning code doesn't have a specific definition of a restaurant. What we had communicated to the applicant when they were going through their remodel project was they needed to obtain the restaurant endorsement from the state, because if they don't have that, then it has to be posted as 21 and over, which would then constitute a bar. So we relied upon the definition that we do have within the city's beer regulations that relate to where hot meals are served, so that was an element they needed to comply with, as well as maintaining that endorsement that brings in then the state's percentage on their sales to ensure that they're staying within the confines of state law of what's required to have the restaurant endorsement.
So in essence, they could meet our code for what constitutes a restaurant, they still need to meet the state code's requirement for a restaurant, by definition, that is allowed to sell alcohol by the drink, complementing the main income or revenue from food service.
So for example, if a bar restaurant sold 90 percent of their sales were in beer and wine by the glass, or the pitcher, or whatever, and 10 percent was food, they would not be meeting...
They're a bar.
Yeah, they would not be meeting any of the criteria for a restaurant.
Correct, and the premise would have to be posted as 21 and over, and would technically be a bar at that point.
And that would be a reason for the director to revoke the license, so it'd also be the reasoning that the city could revoke the license for that.
And since the city does not have, our rules can be more stringent than the state's, but not less, is that true?
It varies upon the depend, on the type of regulation you're referring to.
The land use regulation can be independent, where you have the authority to administer land use as is authorized by the state. When you get into the alcohol regulations, I am less familiar with that side, and that would...
Yeah, you need to be, in some things, you can be more restrictive than the state, but in cases like this, as the cases that Rod just cited, the cities were trying to be more restrictive than the state, the applicant then sued and prevailed because the city overstepped its bounds.
And it basically says that you, the city's decision-making is within that statute.
Now, the difference in this case is that the granting of the waiver is entirely a discretionary function of the city. It's not reviewable by a court unless they find that you've been arbitrary and capricious, or some, you violated the standard of fair use of discretion. So the fact, if you decide, the council decides, we don't want to hear this, this committee decides that, okay, it's been to council once, we are not going to send it back up again, that decision is not reviewable by a court. It's the exercise of your discretion in whether to grant the waiver or not.
Rod, does the state have a way of verifying the percentages of food versus alcohol sales in an establishment, and is there a specific length of time they have to have records for that in order for them to, for any establishment to meet the criteria?
Yeah, I believe the state can come in and audit the business at any time to verify that, that they're meeting the food and the alcohol sales.
But they don't have, they're not specific, there's not a specific timeframe that they audit before they will grant you?
Not, I don't, didn't see that specifically spelled out. Normally, what they would do, if the city granted this, they would probably give them an opportunity to meet those needs. They'd come in and check, and if they weren't, then they would revoke the permit.
It was, it was our understanding previously, that if somebody applies for a restaurant endorsement, they will grant it, and then they'll come back in three to six to eight months, and then check the numbers...
Make sure it's happening.
To make sure that that was happening. But I don't think they have any prerequisite, priority issuance, where they come back and audit after the fact.
I just want to make sure that there's no confusion here, that the issue of whether it's a restaurant or not has no bearing on whether they can sell any alcohol by the drink. That is an independent issue. If it's a restaurant, council decides not to give the waiver, they can't serve alcohol. If they're a bar, if it was allowed in that zone, council didn't issue the waiver, they wouldn't be able to sell alcohol.
That's because of the 300-foot...
Because of the 300-foot law.
Exactly. For on-premise consumption.
Right.
And the Mormon church being 292 feet away and a half, that has no more bearing than the Campus Christian Center, which is 75, 80 feet away?
It's, if I may, it's not, it isn't, council typically takes that public comment, and obviously wants to hear from interested parties, but that is not dispositive. The Campus Christian Center, if it meets the definition of a house of worship, because they didn't say anything, I don't think you can draw a conclusion that they were positively inclined or negatively inclined. They just didn't come forward to the council and say anything. So the council acting as the conscience of the community is the one who makes that decision.
Since this has come up, I've made myself a customer at the perch and the perch two, to see what the situation is. The menu at the perch specifically says restaurant and bar on the top of it. So it indicates to me that there's a clear intent to be a bar. That's my observation. The bar at the perch two, which seems to be a legitimate place to put that sort of thing, where you serve by the drink, and it's a drinking establishment across from another one in direct competition, seems to be a good place for it. And reviewing the sales numbers that were provided to us, it doesn't seem like consumption of alcohol by the drink is, would be the deciding factor on whether this entity can continue to operate. They're doing $15,000 in February in packaged beer sales. So it seems to me that you're not putting this place out of business if we say you can't have beer by the drink. There's a law in place, a statute in place, it has the 300-foot limit, and so it would seem to me that you almost need to change the law in order for this to be a legitimate thing. You'd have to change it to allow it in that zone, or something like that, to make that...
In order to make it a bar?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think a definition of a bar and a tavern under our zoning code or by the state, it would definitely have to meet one or the other. But in that zone now, a bar or tavern would not be allowed. And I think, if I can just caution the council, too, I think it's fine to consider the economic indicators, the, all of the other things, the social implications, but again, it's a discretionary function. If, in fact, the council does not wish to offer a waiver, and it in fact means that this business cannot continue in its altered form, unfortunately, that is the decision of the council. And the economic benefit or economic impact is not the deciding factor, it is whether the council wishes to issue a waiver. And the waiver, of course, is something, it is prohibited there, unless you give a waiver.
Well, I have avoided bringing in the fact that I started going into the perch back in the mid-'60s.
Well, you went to college with Jesus, so...
Well, that's right, and we were good buddies. But at that time, there was no alcohol of any kind being served at the perch. It was a campus place where you bought a malt and held hands with your girlfriend. And it has evolved since then into what it is now. And so this has not had a longstanding historical perspective, and that's one of the reasons that I didn't bring up any of this, and you brought it up, clarified it. So the only issue that we're going to deal with here is the issue of, it is within 300 feet of two houses of worship, and do we want to write a waiver or not? Having nothing to do with...
The economics of it.
The economics or the morality of it. Is that accurate?
Yes, and I believe you need to also look at the procedural status of this request. This has been through council, I believe it was last November?
Yes.
I think it was November. And the applicant has asked that it be reconsidered. No independent councilman wanted to bring it forward upon reconsideration, so we allowed the applicant with the chair's fiat to bring it back. If this committee decides that they wish to forward it to council for additional consideration, you may do so. If you choose not to, then the issue, it will not be going to council, and it will be done here.
Well, and I, I don't want to speak for you guys, but I don't believe that we're being arbitrary, because as Gary said, we have heard this both as council, well, in committee for, this will be the third time now, you know, because we heard it in committee before, it went to council the last time. So honestly, I think that I've heard enough and seen enough that I don't think it needs to go any further.
Well, generally, I'm in favor of private enterprise, I'm in favor of business, and I personally have no problem with alcohol by the drink being served on campus, although a lot of people do. However, if that's not the issue, and the issue is that this is within 300 feet of two houses of worship, I'm going to have to go on the negative side myself.
I agree with you, John, on the, like, I'm not opposed to alcohol consumption, or even on campus, I'm not opposed to that, but that's not, that's not the issue here. And the police department on campus has said that they've had issues with that establishment before, and it seems to me, if we're going to grant a waiver to some entity, then it should be someone that doesn't have a negative history, and they should maybe bring it back after they've had a chance to prove themselves as a restaurant, maybe in a year or so, everything's working fine, and you can bring the issue back as many times as you want, I assume. So, but...
I think you need to be careful that we aren't doing forum shopping here, where you can keep coming back as, you know, every six months. If the council or the committee wishes to give some guidance into that, if it, you would like to, you can recheck it in a year, something like that, that's certainly something you can do. I think what I'm hearing is you don't want to foreclose any re-looking at the issue, but you just don't want to see it again before they've had a chance to establish a track record.
My initial question's to legal counsel about whether we could initiate some conditions that would sunset to give it a probationary period, that's what I was after. But since that doesn't seem feasible, then I think perhaps we should table the idea until the situation changes. Either the law changes, or...
Or something.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that then, you know, we're not going to forward this to council, and...
Do you want to give the applicant some guidance as to when you would consider looking at it again? If you desire it at all?
Well, since I'm in favor of business and don't have a problem with drinking beer by the glass, or wine by the glass, or by the pitcher, whatever, on campus, I would suggest if they were to run a clean shop for a year, I would be willing to look at it again.
I guess I would agree with that.
Okay, I guess that that's, that'll be the direction we can give, then, is to give it a year, and we'll see what happens.
Okay, thank you.
And the committee can decide at that time whether to forward it again.
Well, a question from the audience?
All right, come on up and give your question. Introduce yourself, and same, same story, same old song and dance.
My name is Walt Lockduff, I am the property owner of the perch, and I ran the perch for seven years myself. And I understand that you're concerned about implying certain conditions. If, if it would please you guys, we will voluntarily do whatever you would request, because this is my livelihood and is going down the toilet. We've gone over this, how much I've invested into this, I lost an apartment, we've had these licenses for years, and now that we've remodeled and put in thousands of dollars, now we're pulling the license. Now, I understand the probation, that's fine. Give us a year, we'll show you how we can run it. We'll show you how we can run it. Give us a year.
Well, that's what we're doing, but we can't, we can't put those conditions on the issuance of a license, because, you know, yeah, I believe you, but...
The problem, Walt, is that we can't, if, we can't take it off if things don't work out.
We can't, we can't take it away.
I will take it away. I promise you. Not anybody, I can, do you understand? Because, all right, let's do this, then, this is fine. A year from when?
From the, from the day that you guys stopped us? From right now.
So that gives us a year and a half, is what it's given us.
You can take as long as you want, but a year from now.
A year from now, no matter what.
Right.
Well, I appreciate your concern, I appreciate what you guys, how you feel and all that, and I'm not going to argue with you or anything else. We will show you that we run a clean operation, and we'll see you back in a year.
Okay, thanks, Walt.
Don't change the fries, they're perfect. You got the seasoning on the fries just right.
Well, thank you. And that menu will be changed immediately, because that was the old one when we had a license, and we just forgot to put the one on their perch and bar. Okay?
All right, we appreciate that. Thank you, Walt.
Thanks, Walt.
Next up is the Temple Commons lots 2, 3, 4, and 7, 8, and 9 of Block 3, Lot Line Adjustment. And Becky Couch is going to present that to us.
Are those people for again? Yep.
Good afternoon.
Can I get the right remote? There we go. You didn't want to start at the end?
Keep it a surprise. All right, so for your review today, we have a, oh my goodness, this is not the right...
I think Bill's messing with you today.
Bill's enjoying this way too much.
Sorry about that. All right, so before you, we have a Lot Line Adjustment request in the Temple Commons planned unit development. The final PUD plot for Temple Commons was approved in 2007, and there was a minor PUD amendment that allowed... amendment that allowed for slightly larger lot sizes than the original plot approval, and that was in 2008. Recently, just last month, on March 25th, Planning and Zoning Commission approved a minor amendment request to consolidate and adjust some boundaries of six parcels in order to create four lots. The existing six lots are 30 feet wide and 55 feet deep, and the proposed four lots are each 45 feet wide and 55 feet deep. The proposed configuration creates lots that are identical in size to the larger lots that were approved as part of the minor PUD amendment in 2008, so the proposed lots are consistent with the PUD approval. Just to give you an idea where we're at, Temple Commons is outlined by the light green. It's just located north of White Avenue, near the roundabout with Joseph Street going up to the northwest. And then the subjects under review are outlined here in red. And then zooming in a little closer, the subject properties are outlined in green. These are the existing six parcels here, and as I said, they're 30 feet wide and 55 feet deep. And then here's the proposed configuration. Sorry, it's a little bit difficult to read, but there will result in four parcels, 45 feet wide, 55 feet deep. Here, here, and you can see the existing lines a little bit fainter. So, staff's recommendation is to approve the lot line adjustment request and has no suggested conditions.
John?
I'm the liaison to planning and zoning, and planning and zoning went over this with no questions. They did not want to put anything on it as far as conditions, and they passed it unanimously, and as far as I'm concerned, we can do the same thing here and put it on consent agenda.
Jim?
I would agree with that, and I can't see any issues with this lot line adjustment at all.
Becky, this is something that has been done to other blocks of this PUD as well, basically taking that same and making the same sort of lots.
Yes, previously, they were just differently shaped. They were L-shaped lots, but they were the same lot area, lot size.
I know this isn't a public hearing, but it is a public meeting, and if there's anybody that has anything to say about it, then come on up and let us know, because we do that for lot line adjustments, and nobody is, so I guess we'll move this forward for approval on consent agenda.
Just for the committee's information, we do that for lot divisions. Lot line adjustments do not require any sort of public comment, but certainly appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item I'm going to recuse myself from, because I'm a board member on the applying party, so I'll move to the other side of the table.
The other side of the table here.
I'll go twice, Jim.
We are going to talk about the rendezvous in the Park 2015 and the request approval for Beer Garden for East City Park. Dwight Curtis and Jim Boland are presenting.
Well, good evening. This is pretty much a repeat of what we've had in the past, goes from July 17th through the 19th. And we have the entire area fenced off that would be the designated beer garden. The map's in your, in your packet, and the police chief is supportive of the normal procedure that we've used in the past, where rendezvous provided their own security, and we've also had no, no issues with alcohol in the previous rendezvous since we've been serving alcohol. And that's pretty much it.
Benton's, 2005 was the first year, if I remember correctly.
And we've issued the waiver every year since then. We're looking at July, so this is Friday through Sunday, correct?
Correct.
What year did we make the, the whole area the beer garden?
I think it's been three years ago, I think. Four, maybe. Might have been four.
We haven't had any issue with that?
No. It's actually, actually been better.
Okay.
I was, I was on the council before my four-year hiatus when this originally came through, and it was discussed and discussed and discussed. And since there, there have been no problems. There wasn't that first year, and there have been none since, so I see no reason that we shouldn't also put this on the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
I would agree. This is a resolution, though, does it need to go regular? It can go on consent. Well, go ahead and throw it on consent. Thanks, fellas.
Thank you, Dwight.
You bet.
Okay. Next up is a, we're just all sorts of liquor today.
Yes, right.
Is it a resolution for beer and wine sales at the Moscow Farmers Market? Kathleen Burns is presenting.
Yep. So, last year, we did a pilot for three weeks in October of the farmers market season.
A little Oktoberfest, if you will.
Yeah, it was pretty small. And we had two local vendors, we had the Moscow Brewing Company and Camus Winery participate. And they had great sales and good responses, and we had no problems at all in the market. So, this was taken back to the Moscow Farmers Market Commission, and the only recommendation that they made as a commission was to increase space to four and two. So, that's it.
So, they only, we only, I thought we were, we allowed three last time, but we only had, we were only allowing two?
Two.
Okay, so, we're going to, we're talking about having four vendor spaces.
Potential.
Poten, I mean, we might still only get two, but we could have up to four. Gary?
And this is pursuant to the ordinance change that the council made.
Yep.
Allowing beer and alcohol, or beer and wine, sales in the public right-of-way pursuant to resolution. When council allowed this to happen, or we allowed it to happen in the past, it's been within Friendship Square, which is a city park. So, this would allow the farmers market managers to be able to cite those booths wherever in the market they think it would be appropriate.
So, this could be all up or down Main Street, then? Not just that?
Correct.
And maybe not even next to each other?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there going to be a area, fenced-off area? We're not, are we going to just allow people drinking up and down Main Street?
If I may.
Go ahead.
It's not, it's not a beer garden. It is merely tasting the wares of somebody offering sales by the package.
So, it's a package sale.
So, it's not sit there and drink beer and.
Well, then what good is it?
Well, Rod Hall's going to come up and tell you what good it is.
Have to enjoy it at home.
Under the statute, they have to have a defined area, they have to have somebody checking IDs, and they have to be able to watch them all. You can't walk out with it, and it's a small amount.
So, these vendors, just to answer questions, they have to follow ABC rules, they have to file a catering pyramid with us per each event. That hasn't changed, so.
So, they still have extra rules to follow, other than.
On their end.
Whatever we set on this end.
Yeah, we're just supplying real estate and up to four spaces.
Who decides, so you have six possible vendors, who decides? Who are the four?
Well, I came prepared for that, because I looked up on the Moscow Chamber of Commerce and Wine and Breweries locally in our four counties, two states, four cities, and there's a list of about six, you know, that could potentially come. We've never invited anyone to come to the market, so what we might do this year, per this resolution, is set out a welcome letter with all the information that they might need to be a vendor in the market and welcome people. And that could be Riverport Brewery and Clarkson, for instance. It could be the Coltriss Creek, who has been down in Julietta, Paradise Creek in Pullman, Lindsay Creek Vineyards is a new one in the orchards, and so. But we decide how and when people come into the market as a walk-on on rotation, so these aren't permanent stalls.
This is a walk-on situation.
Okay.
Yeah.
That answers my question.
Yep.
If you're not in this week, you could be in next week.
So, if all six show up, the first four get it?
They wouldn't show up because our process has changed.
For walk-on?
Yeah. Previously, people just took a raffle ticket and waited their turn, and they were either in the market or not. In the last seven years, we've developed a process for walk-on, so that they know on Thursday where they'll be, and.
So, they don't show up and have to, they have to haul their wares back?
We don't do that. Nope.
Gary, did you have something to add?
I was just going to, the city clerk reminds me that Washington vendors who come across and want to taste in Idaho, according to the rules Rod cited, have to follow all the Idaho rules. And it'll be if, as Kathleen said, they'll be treated as walk-ons this year if they, if the farmers market commission and management decides that there'll be some seasoned vendor spaces, that'll be done in accordance with the policies of the farmers market commission.
Yep.
Seems reasonable to me. It's worked before, and expanding, it's good.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm fine with it.
Thank you, Jerry.
All right, well, then we'll forward that as well. Gary, any consent? You bet. Okay. Next up, we're done with our regular agenda, and now it's time for our loan report. Bill Bownap's going to go through the development process.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Just to provide a little bit of background, this is a report on our development process improvement project. The title's fairly short on the agenda, but as the committee and the council's aware, we've been working on improvements to the development review process and the development process as a whole, and this is to provide a report on the current status. So, to provide a little bit of background, in the fall of 2013, there were some concerns expressed within the development community surrounding some select projects, but also some concerns just in general about the construction and development process. On February 5th of 2014, the mayor and relevant development heads that are involved in the construction and plan review process, so led by administration, as well as Community Development, Public Works, and the Fire Department, helped what we consider to be a listening session. We invited the, the development community, and I think we sent out about 300 invitations for that first meeting, invited them to come in, express any concerns they might have. And we really weren't trying to respond to those concerns at that point in time, really were just trying to hear what, what the concerns and questions were. After that, we formed a smaller advisory group, and we created kind of a verbatim record of that meeting, and we worked through that group on each comment that we heard during the course of that meeting to, to really look at it and say, is this an issue that they felt was, was isolated or, or more prevalent in the review process, and what are some things that we could look at doing to change that? And that advisory group had a membership of, oh, anywhere from eight to 12 members that are either contractors, design professionals, working in the local market. So, they helped us work through that with staff around the table to look at improvement recommendations that we could implement in the process. We finalized those recommendations in late April, early May of 2014, and we've been working on implementation of those improvements over the course of the last year. There were a number of recommendations, the first of which is really to improve plan review comments. Generally, there were concerns related to them being somewhat lengthy or somewhat redundant between different departments. Many times, comments were just kind of suggestions of, hey, you might consider doing it this way, and they really wanted to make sure that we were clear about what were suggestions and what clearly were code requirements for changes. The second objective related to establishing plan review target, timeline targets, we really did not have adopted timeframes that for this type of project, this is how long you should expect your plan review to take. So, we wanted to establish those review expectations on both sides, on the customer side, as well as within our own staff. There was a discussion about how can we improve those plan reviews and make them quicker and have fewer revisions, and ensuring that we have all the information that we need to complete the review was identified, so we committed to improve our submission documentation checklist for applicants to utilize. And we also agreed that certain minor corrections, we could just redline on a plan, initial it, and wouldn't require a resubmission or reprint of a plan set. Objective three was to increase our documentation from pre-submission meetings. Again, when requested, we would provide a, a written summary of what had happened during that meeting and the items that came out and the requirements that were discussed. And then if they wanted a more formal pre-submission meeting, we provide that option, they could provide us plans three days in advance, we'd do kind of a mini-review before that meeting, and we can go through that process. Objective four, related to improving street closure and excavation permit process, we did hear about concerns, delays, concerns related to traffic control measure requirements. In that process, so Public Works committed to developing standard traffic control plan details and to work on streamlining that, the street closure and excavation process. We also had concerns about the application of those standards to others that are operating within the right-of-way. So, there are a fair number of tree trimming operations that occur during the course of the year, most often related to utility work, and there were concerns that they weren't following the same standards that construction projects were required to comply with. So, Public Works committed to ensuring that a more equal and consistent application of those standards among all the users in the right-of-way. And then objective five was really just some general customer service improvements, returning calls in a timely fashion. There were some concerns in some departments about getting those calls returned, to clearly explain code requirements, to ensure that we had adequate staff coverage, so that somebody wasn't out of town for two weeks that was the only person that could make a decision on the project, who would delay a project. And then the other thing we also discussed and included was to implement a mediation process with a project, that if there was a requirement of that project that that individual did not necessarily agree with or felt was an improper determination, that that could be reviewed by the city supervisor, not necessarily kind of an appeal process, but a more informal review by the city supervisor to ensure that the, whoever, whatever department was making that requirement was doing so consistent with code requirements and in a reasonable fashion. So, those, those were kind of the bulk of the, the recommendations. Within our office, we have developed new plan content checklist to make sure that, whether it's a residential project, it's a one-sheeter, or a commercial project, it's two, that applicants know the information that we need to have on the plan set, so we can do that plan review in a timely fashion and really try to reduce the number of cycles of review we have to go through that takes time and costs money on both sides of that table. We also created a streamlined permit application, we had separate permit applications for building, electrical, plumbing, mechanical. We created a single project application where they can just place the contractor record for those different phases and identify the scope of work and the nature of the work, and really on one form, to reduce redundancy of application and paperwork. And we also created a checklist on the back of it, which was a quick applicant checklist that they can run down. Either we could sit down with them, let them know these five apply to your project, these don't, scratch them out for them, really, but to give them good guidance and to streamline the, the application process. We've also implemented a number of other improvements. Electronic plant review has been a very big one. It used to be that you had to turn in five sets, big rolls of plans, and we would send one to fire and one downstairs to Public Works and one to planning and one to building. And we are now doing everything electronic, we, so that they submit that electronic plan set to us, we put it out into a shared review environment, where all the reviewers can see the comments that are being made by others. It allows us to create a digital comment summary at the end of that project and transmit that to the applicant and save thousands of dollars in printing costs, when you're talking about large projects, so, and, and speed up the process. It really has been a great thing. We've also implemented online permitting through our new permitting software, so a lot of our, what used to be fax-back-and-forth applications are done online. We also just launched here about a month ago, a new plan review software application for essentially the same cost. We were playing for Adobe, which are reader, which is what we're using for our plan review process. We're now utilizing Bluebeam, that's a more streamlined, cloud-based system that is going to improve the, the plan review process. We've held several training sessions over the course of the year of plan reviewers, talking about, you know, the things we discussed, what's a recommendation, what's really a code requirement, clearly identifying that, here's what we need to be looking at, make sure that your comments are complete, clear, and concise, so they can understand it, that they're not left with a question at the end of the time when they see that comment. And we've had a, you know, increased review communication during that timeframe as well. And we're also looking at other department efficiencies that we've implemented. As part of that process, we identified that permit processing timeframe, so depending upon the nature of the project for residential, if it's a single-family alteration, small-scale decks or porches, we've set a target of less than three days to get that taken care of, if they had to resubmit in less than two days. Up to a new commercial structure, which would be 15 business days for that first review, and then eight business days for a subsequent follow-up review. This is kind of a report, this is covering from January 1st of 2014 to March 3rd, and the different types of projects on residential and commercial. So, you can see here, let's say, for structural alteration on a residential project, it's a single or two-family structure, we've had nine reviews during that time period of those types of projects. Our target was less than five days, and our average is 1.88 days for those projects. Our largest review, and occasionally we'll have one that extends outside that timeframe because something unusual or odd happened there, so we did have our longest review, there was four days, still within our timeframe, but obviously much higher than the overall average. If you're looking at additions, again, residential addition, eight days, average is at 4.12. We did have one that was fairly extensive and required some back and forth, it took 10 days to get that complete. So, we do have a few that are extending beyond, but. So we do have a few that are extending beyond, but on, on average, our overall reviews are well within the identified target. And as we look at new commercial structures, we had 18 of those reviews, 15 days was the target, and we're completing those on average at 8.44 days. So overall, you know, we're, we're doing really well within those timeframes. The same follows through on the second review, total number of reviews we had. You can see certainly on the first reviews, say a new single-family, we got 25 first reviews, only six had to come back for a second review. So 19 of those were out the door after that first review and going. Commercial tend to have more revisions or changes, so we had 18 plan sets, 14 had a, a second review. And we were averaging those, we had our target of eight days, we're averaging about 4.7 days for those second reviews. So overall, you know, we've had a few just isolated projects that extended beyond that, but the averages are well within the timeframes that we had identified during that process.
You had an asterisk up there Bill, so if you got an asterisk, we're gonna ask you.
The asterisk was this one, which was a structural alteration, and, and that was a structural alteration that really was so significant, we probably should have considered it as a new structure. It was here at seven days where our target, now that was, that was in the second review, so our target here was less than four, it ended up at seven. Now, I asked our staff to track down what was going on with that structure, and it was such a, such a significant review and such a complex project that it did end up taking a little bit longer, and it had some fire issues that had to get sorted through. So that's, that one was, was beyond our target, but on average, two and a half days for those structural alterations on commercial projects. So a lot of those are, are going very well. Next steps in the process, we did send out invitations last week to a meeting we will hold tomorrow afternoon here at 4 o'clock. And this is a follow-up where we're gonna report back on some of the actions that we've taken to implement the recommendations that the group came up with to date. Uh, we'll share the same results on the plan review process, you know, what is our average timeframe against our goals, share that with the group as well, and also, again, invite input on how we're doing, how can we do better to serve the customers that we have? So, and then we'll continue to improve, and continue to work and, and do the best that we can.
Was there like a contact list of people who were at the first one that you could communicate in some way?
The invitation we sent out was 161 contractors for the meeting tomorrow, so we're covering pretty much everybody of every trade here if they have an interest or, yeah, cause we never know whether it's somebody that gets impacted that's not, you know, wasn't in the original group, it's a new contractor that came into town that's had an issue. So it's just everybody who's in our database. Uh, we have excluded out some of the very distant contractors in Portland or, or Boise or some of those. We're really dealing with Spokane, Coeur d'Alene, you know, local market, and so we sent out 161 invitations and had to make 161 phone calls today because we, in our letter, said Wednesday the 14th, and really it should have been Tuesday the 14th, so we made contact with everybody today to make sure they understood that it's happening on Tuesday. So, um, we're just continuing to work, and I, I think overall, we've had very good feedback from the, the contractor community and, and looking forward to continuing to work with them.
The council wants to attend that as well, you're certainly invited.
It's up here.
It'll be in council chambers, yeah.
Well, and like you said, you came up with these recommendations jointly with a committee of developers along with our departments, so, so there weren't any surprises, everybody kinda came to this together. Seems to me like we're doing our due diligence here, trying to make things better.
How do you, other than numbers and all of that Bill, how do you feel about it? Do you think we're making some pretty good progress as far as our reputation amongst the contractors and builders and stuff?
Yeah, I think as a whole, the local contracting community has been very happy. I mean, well, I really don't wanna speak for them, but, but overall, we actually had even one individual that told one of our inspectors, hey, I'm not gonna be there tomorrow, I've got a conflict, but I sure won't, you know, tell Bill that I think everybody's doing a great job and been very, very helpful. I think overall, we've had very good relations with, with the contractors over the course of the year. You know, and, and some of those concerns before were isolated around a few select, you know, projects where we still were doing, I think, overall pretty well, but that didn't mean that we didn't have room for improvement. And I think those are the things that we worked on to identify. I suspect a lot of our reviews are happening in about the same timeframes as we have now, but it's good that everybody knows what to expect and they're, and we're tracking it, and we'll continue to report back on it, and if we can adjust some of those numbers down, then I think we'll continue to work on trying to do that over the course of the next few years.
Actually Bill, I kinda like after you had the meeting tomorrow and have had a chance to digest the information, I wouldn't mind at all having you come back and...
Tell us how that happened.
Sure, be happy to.
Give us a...
To wrap up?
Wrap up, a end of session report as it were.
Sure, we can do that.
All right. Thanks Bill.
You're welcome.
Thank you Bill.
Anything else for the good of the order, moving further sir? All right, we'll consider ourselves adjourned fellas.